All right, this is the work session for January 25th. No, January 27th.
Pick a day.
It says 25th, that's right, but I get it. All right, two of minutes, that'll be me and Mr. Garvis. Ordinance 80, this'll be the third reading, I haven't heard anything about it. You have, John, have you heard anything about this ordinance 80 with the change to cars in your yard? So we'll go ahead and do third reading on that. Vinny and Jeff. All right, the next one is 4, 2022. So this is the purchase of installation and lighting on Field 3, along with, that's also known as Field C, right?
It's Field C.
Field C.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we gonna call it 3 in the ordinance?
It would be, it would be Field C.
In the ordinance it's 3, should we amend it?
I think it's the same thing, isn't it?
I just put what was in the request.
I would amend it to make it C, so that there's no concern. We called it 3, they made it, they called C, we do the field and somebody goes, well, what's, what's this one? Is it 3 or C?
Or if they're looking for it, they can't find it, because you want, there's no 3 out there.
Is it 3 or just?
An amendment's only necessary if it's unclear what field you're referencing, really, but, so.
I would just amend it.
It sounds like it is unclear if we're, it's never called Field 3, right?
No, it's called Field 3.
Is it 3?
Yeah, some of us call it Field 3, some of us say C.
What's the formal, we need to make 1.
I mean, when the truck shows, when the truck shows us, where are they gonna drop the pole then?
Field 3.
Or C.
I would say Field C, because we rented it as Field C.
Then we need to call C.
How about 3 and C? I would just say 3, there's, there's no 3 C's, so you don't have.
Just call it C, because when it's rented, it's C.
What do the signs say?
C.
C.
Pretty sure they say C.
Yeah, I think they do.
So it's just internally, make it C.
It's just internally noted as 3 then.
Don't worry, we'll make it relevant in six months when we sponsor the field.
And Jessica, instead of reading within the where S, within the title, within everything, just say where it's noted is Field 3, it'll be amended to Field C, because there's five places.
Wow, that was fast, Jan.
They'll even have to read each one.
Okay, so Mayor, you wanna talk about that, or Mr. Chadwick?
Sorry to the confusion on 3 versus C. This'll be, this money is already in our capital budget, so it's already been approved to move forward for this year. This'll be the purchase, working with Graybar, who has already completed through a government bid for us. This is naturally done through their bidding processes. We will be completing a lighting project for Field C to be able to operate in the nighttime, both spring, summer, and fall seasons. This will help us double the size of our current operating program, so we're really excited about this opportunity. It'll allow us to also rent the field longer on weekends, to allow more tournament play to happen, because one of the things we get stuck on right now is, we can only play on one lit field currently. So we're asking for this to also go through as a 1, 2, 3 for this process, because of the timeframe it's gonna take to get the materials in, and prices will go up if we don't order them now.
How was the, the reaction to the lights on Field B? Was it a successful year with the lights on Seal B, or Field B?
Yeah, yeah, there's, in fact, our biggest issue is the size of our programs. We, like, right now, more softball teams wanted in, they wanted more days of the week, and we had to limit everything. Also, youth, baseball-wise, we had the same issue, they wanted to expand. Clearly, we can't do that in the spring and fall, and then even in the summer, we had to end a little bit early, because they can't start a game at a certain time if it's not completed on time.
Excellent.
So, we'll be booked.
Any questions for Mr. Chadwick about this project?
Just to note, $250,000 was budgeted, the bid came in at 262, right?
Correct.
So, depending on how the other capital items come in, there might need to be a small amendment.
When, when will we know that by?
Probably later.
Is this one of those things where it's the first step of dozens to get these lights in?
Um, it's the first step of three or four.
By the end of, by the beginning of the season, or?
My, well, if we can order them next week, then we're looking at May or June.
Okay.
If we get them ordered, like, tomorrow or Monday, if not, we're stuck for an extra month.
And the price goes up.
And the price goes up.
And the price goes up?
Yeah.
Well, that being said, I'd, I'd be interested in doing 1, 2, 3 on this, any objections?
No, and I think everyone should be aware, you may say you'll see them by May or June, but with what's going on, that may not happen. But the sooner, the sooner the better chance, yeah. People that have been told it'll happen on this day and it's three or four months later.
Yeah, but we gotta get them ordered.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
So if we pass it, there's still no guarantee it'll be for the someone, I hate to say that.
You're breaking my heart.
Such a real estate. Someone had thought they'd get a garage door in a month, maybe May, and they ordered it a month and a half.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's a sad world right now. While we get into that, while we talk about the trucks with the chips.
There you go. Ordinance 5, 2022, Mr. Garvis for this one. Mayor, do you wanna speak on this, or Mr. Garvis?
This is the NOPEC Energize Community Grant, we were awarded it again for this year, it's $29,606. We are gonna apply that money towards these lights, because it has to be used for energy type things, which we did with the first one, so we're anticipating this, let's just call it 30,000 for the next three years, which will offset the cost of these, which will put more money back into the general fund, so it's gonna help with that a lot. And they're energy efficient lights, LED, I mean, if you've been out there at night when those lights are on, they're, they're pretty phenomenal, and the estimated cost to run those lights for the evening, initially, I think we were saying 30 bucks, and thanks to Mr. Schuman, he did an analysis of it, and I believe it's around 11 dollars to keep them on, so it's, it's a pretty energy efficient thing, and that's why NOPEC sponsors this and promotes it.
And just to note, every, every communication we have with NOPEC, in any forms we need to fill out, we indicate this as your one of three towards Field C lighting.
Do you have to tell them what it's used for?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to do 1, 2, 3 on this, any objections? Any questions?
None.
All right, Mr. Garvis and Mr. Finley on that one. Resolution 6, this is for the road projects for 2022. Mr. Giladi, you wanna speak on this?
Sure, I can do that. This is for the 2022 road program. As you guys may recall, every three years, we do a new citywide pavement condition ratings report, so that has recently been completed. I think all members of council have a copy of the new pavement condition ratings report and the map that goes with it, so we've got all new information, the old reports are really obsolete at this point. So for this year, in working with John V. and the mayor, the plan will be to, and I'll read the roads that we're gonna resurface, Capitol Boulevard, Prairie Crossing, Brook Circle, Shoshone Trail, Mimosa Drive, Whispering Woods Drive, and Blue Jay Trail. Now, as you look at your report, you'll see that generally, we've selected the roads from the top of the list, except, the very first road is Valley G Road, between Twinsburg Road and the Hudson City Limits. The reason that is not a part of this year's program is, we recently found out that the city's gonna be awarded a grant for $292,000 from AMAS for the paving of Valley G Road, so we will break that road out separate, and at this time, I believe that that money is programmed for fiscal year '24, which would be between July 1st of '23 and June 30th of '24, so I believe that's the window for that road to be paved.
And isn't there gonna be a sewer project in that area also that?
No, there's no sewer in that area, but we may be thinking of the.
It's the housing development.
Proposed housing development that Coleman's Homes has proposed.
Yeah, we really don't wanna, you don't really wanna touch that project, it finishes what's going on, because it's like, you fix it, and it looks real nice.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I ask.
There was a rainwater project, though, or a ditch project.
That's what I thought. It hasn't been completed.
Yeah, there was a roadside ditch project there last fall, but that's been completed.
That's, I guess, what I was probably referring to.
Oh, yes, maybe it was.
That was just a, kinda get the water out of the ditch there, but.
That's a very good idea.
Does anyone know what's going on with that development? Is he going forward, or?
I haven't heard.
Yeah, we haven't heard.
I mean, you tore everything down.
They got the Phase 3 for Spruce Hill, that one's rolling now, I saw through the planning.
Yeah, that one's been dead.
So he may be concentrating on that, and we don't know, I mean, he may be one at a time, we don't know yet.
I wish he hadn't torn down all the trees, because that was natural runoff. Now, it just flows like crazy, because there's, all the stuff's gone.
And I would ask if we could, if we like to call it a 1, 2, 3, so we can proceed, please.
I'm good with that, any, everyone all good? All right. Resolution 7, this is for the Windmill Golf Parking Lot. Mayor, do you wanna talk about this?
Sure, so we, there was an agreement in place prior to me, that we were to maintain the driveway and parking lot for that facility. That has been a part of that agreement, we've talked about this in the past, we were hopefully trying to do it last year, but keep in mind, at least they'll own that property, that is the property of City of Macedonia, so this is to pave that and fulfill that agreement. If we weren't to fulfill that agreement, Mark and I have talked pretty extensively that they could potentially pick us to court and have a big problem, so this is all in truth to our word and paving the law.
Yeah, the concession lease agreement was originally with Two Club, now with Windmill slash Bizpro, and it does make the city responsible for capital improvements, not maintenance, it's a little bit separate, but because this is a capital improvement and the city owns like the mayor says, that's why it's before you tonight.
But the big piece to that, too, is the maintenance, so in the past, I don't know what happened, but the maintenance wasn't taking place, and I can tell you that Mr. Giladi and I have talked pretty extensively about what they're gonna do, we're gonna inspect it yearly to look at it, if there's something that they're not doing to maintain that parking lot, he will communicate that to me, and we will let them know that that's something they need to address.
Also note that this is part of the planned capital, so the money's already set aside.
Any questions? 1, 2, 3 on this one, everyone good? All right. Page 8, Mr. Finley, would you like to pick this one? And then I'll second.
The resolution or?
Uh, says ordinance.
Okay, gotcha, all right, thank you.
Uh, this is for the Parks and Rec Truck, I don't know who wants to speak on this?
Well, we can do a combination, but basically, we budgeted for these trucks, and one of them is for the, we got that truck that was incapacitated, let's say, and insurance covered a portion of that. I can tell you that the need for these trucks is, is pretty exclusive to what these two departments are using them for. Mr. Chadwick's department really hasn't had a use of the vehicle, we've been loaning them from the service department, this is finalizing that, so they actually have a vehicle that they can operate with and do their work, and it's versatile, so it's not just in the parks, it's also the recreation side, and obviously, in service, we need those vehicles as well, because we do a lot of shuffling with what we're doing today, so it's very helpful to have those vehicles, and as we're all aware, and I think Jan alluded to it earlier, getting vehicles is very difficult, that's why this was added today. Mr. Zernak spent a lot of time this week, and last week, trying to find them. A lot of the dealers out there aren't even accepting the government bid stuff, because they know they're gonna make more money selling it to anyone else, and not agreeing to those terms, it's more profitable, according on as much as that, this tonight dismay, but we did have the ability to find these trucks, and what's the timeline I'm on?
Six months.
And if we don't, I mean, it could be much, much longer, they, they deal a lot in these types of vehicles, so thankful for his work to find them.
What is the six months?
To get them, within six months.
Oh, they, they're not on the lot?
No.
They have to be built.
And keep in mind that with the trucks we use for these, I mean, these are no thrills, no throws, we're not, we're not getting the leather seats and all that, it's.
Nothing's ever on the lot, great, no.
Is that how the cruisers work out, is we found them on the lot?
Yeah, sorry, I still will find those, but with trucks, it's a little bit different, I mean, we could probably go searching around for them, but.
They cost more and they're further away.
These are 3,500 trucks, I mean, were they three quarters?
Yeah.
Those three quarters, though.
Or one ton, I think.
Getting them this done now is gonna save us time and money, or save us delivery time and save us some money, too.
Anything we can do.
Over the cost over, as prices go up.
Anything we can do to get our foot in the door, to get them, because the need is there, and, you know, I'm hoping they're here in six months, I don't know what's going on in the world, but I'm hoping we get them within six months, so that we can put them in use and.
And they were on the five-year capital.
Yeah, they were in the plan. And then Jeff, if you could take number nine, and Vinny, can you second that?
Yes.
So, you know, we'd like to get these done 1, 2, 3, so we can get them out of the way, so they'll have to, Mr. Gedetti, they'll have to waive the 48-hour rule, and then add, and then make a motion to read, to read, and then, okay.
Yes.
You guys cool with that? If you have any questions, Mark can write it in the landing.
Yeah, it's the normal process, but then as we proceed by the motion, waive the 48-hour rule, add to the agenda.
If you have any question, ask Vinny. I gotta start my line.
Can we do this in the same motion? You can. Which, which one?
See, Vinny, I didn't get you.
The 48 and the add.
He loves it.
We need to do anything with the contracts and stamp the type on it, because if we sign that one, we pay them 100 bucks less. It's to our advantage. Their lawyers will talk to our lawyers, and they'll figure it out.
No, that's, so that's just, basically identifying the vehicle being purchased and the general figures, you know, there can always be a little bit of a minus.
But it says the balance sheet, so by law, we could say, we signed for this, you can't bill me for that.
We'll have to see what they say.
Spend more money fighting with them than you will with 100 bucks.
They'll take the luxury of the truck over 100 bucks.
Yeah. Into that with Rita.
And then the adjournments, Mr. Finley and Mr. Ventura, anyone have anything else to add?
You just get the PowerPoint, I'll do that during my report, that'll absorb my report today, because we usually do that when we put this there, so, just so the public knows, and Kyle's already said that once we get done with the meeting, we'll have that up for the public to view on our website.
One thing I wanted to bring up, Mr. Finley and I were talking about this, and Mr. Finley and Mr. Gedetti, was we do have the ability to pass charter amendments, so that council could make meetings virtual, even though it's at state level, we can't have virtual meetings, I guess Home Rule says that we can, can make charter amendments, so I believe Mr. Finley asked Mr. Gedetti to start looking into that and writing that. You know, what he writes isn't gonna be the final thing, and it will have to be voted on by the public, right, since it's a charter amendment?
Yeah, it'll go to the next regularly scheduled election.
So, you know, Mark will start us off with, with everything, obviously, that's most lawful, and then I'd like to look at that. I would like to make, you know, the suggestions, if we do this, we do need to make sure that, I would like to see a unanimous vote with council, it has to be, come from the council president, unanimous vote, and there has to be a reason for it, like, we have reasons for the executive session, I would like to be able to say, for public health and for weather, emergency type things, so that's what I would like to see in it, and I would like, you know, I don't want anyone to be able to abuse it, but I do think that council should have the option. I think I would have liked to have it virtual this week and last week, just with the way Omicron is spreading so crazy, so if that's something that's within our power to do, I'd like to see if we can do it, and just make sure that we can't be abused, so if we all put our heads together on it, with what Mark comes up with, then we should be good.
I would like to speak on that, because when I was out, I missed, I believe, two meetings, Mrs. Tully, while I was out with my condition, my incident, and I did contact Mr. Gedetti about that, and at that particular time, there was nothing that could be done, so I'm glad to see this coming to light, and that we were gonna work on, on, on this particular thing, and be able to handle that appropriately, so there's nobody left out, and everybody can be included, whether Mr. Finley's out of town, or the chief's crew has to haul me again, whatever may come up first, you know.
So originally, the state had approved that we're allowed to do it without the state saying yes?
Right, so what Mr. Ventura is referencing, he had calls and asked if there are any changes with the state legislature, at the time, there weren't. I guess what's happened recently, the Democrats had proposed legislation to reintroduce the ability to have virtual meetings, the Republicans shot it down, so there's nothing that's gonna be coming from the General Assembly, as far as we know right now, allowing virtual meetings. Under the Home Rule powers for municipalities under the Ohio Constitution, there, I think, is an ability for council to enact legislation approved by the voters to allow virtual meetings to occur for Macedonia.
Okay.
Great.
So it has to go to ballot?
Correct.
To be approved, because unless the state says yes, we can't do it.
Yeah, we should, we should be able to make.
Can we get this on the ballot by May for the primaries?
But we all have to double-check the filing deadlines, but I think the local issue deadline is 60 or 90 days prior to the election.
And it may not be that date, because they still haven't finished the redistricting.
Right.
So it could be in June, could be in July, that's why.
We don't even have.
You get people to your door that you don't know if they're gonna be our rep or not.
Right.
Because they're still drawing maps.
Is that gonna be on the ballot, then?
Um, if it's a special election, I believe we're on the hook for it, otherwise, if it's a regularly scheduled election, no.
And that could be upwards of what?
10, 15. 10 to 13, I think.
Yeah, I thought, we brought that up the other day, we were talking about that, I asked.
So that is something that could wait, did you verify that we're not doing the charter review till next year?
Right.
We discussed it.
I think when we talked about it, yeah, I was 18, so I believe next year is the mandate, you could do it early, because obviously, we did it early last time.
Right.
You could do it early if you wanted to have it this year, but you definitely need to do it next year.
I would wait till next year, no, after we talked about that, just based on this whole, still this situation with Mass and that, maybe next year.
Next year for the charter review, please?
Yeah, so that, you know, the charter review meets in this room in four hours.
We wanna get this charter amendment, if we can do it done this year.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, but then the actual charter review would be next year.
I'm just saying, we can't tack it on with the election.
So is it 60 days?
I'll double-check.
And check, because they were still talking today about the date.
Yeah, but I think the date of the election is written into the law, with so many days, isn't it?
The election date's known, yeah, it's either 60 or 90 days for the local issues.
Right.
Yeah, but the election date may move, because they haven't finished the redistricting.
I don't think they can do that without the legislature getting involved.
The regularly scheduled election will.
No, the primary, which is when we would have this, in May.
That's set, that should be set, all right.
Well, they just talked about it again.
They did, they did bring it up, that that, that might not go, that they may have to make, you know, they may have to make a waiver of whatever it is they do, because of the situation, like Mrs. Tully just said.
If, if that occurred, I don't think there's any way they could reject petitions or local issues that are timely filed under the existing rules, they have to accept it for whenever that election occurs. I think they'd be hard pressed to send it back and say they're not gonna put it on whenever the election does happen.
But I heard, I heard the exact same thing, the exact same thing.
You know, they can't figure it out, because they can't agree on the lines.
All right, anything else, folks? All right.
Winning line.
You have seven minutes. Meet ya out there. Wait. Dun dun dun, da-dun.
Hello and welcome to the January 27th City Council Meeting, it is 7:30 PM. Mr. Hoover, please call the roll.
Ms. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
And I would like to ask Tom O'Brien, the American Legion Chaplain, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
With bowed heads, let us pray. Almighty God, Father of all mankind and judge over nations, we pray thee to guide our work in this meeting. We pray for those to serve the people and guard the public welfare, those civil servants who work at City Hall and throughout our community, that by thy blessing, they may be enabled to discharge their duties honestly and well. We pray for our leaders, that by thy help, they will provide the leadership our community has empowered them with. And finally, oh God, our mercy, we ask thy blessing and comfort for our neighbors, who may be suffering mental or physical disability, cheer them and bring them up, thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen. And now, please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on our agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, January 13th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments? I don't see anyone here, so I'll assume there's none. Correspondence from the clerk?
No correspondence.
All right, we'll move right into pending of new legislation, starting with ordinance number 80, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to submit ordinance amending section 1365.08C of the, for its, I don't have to read yet. Mr. Hoover, would you please read that? I recommend it for the third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance amending section 1365.08C of the City of Macedonia codified ordinances relative to the regulation of motor vehicles and the maintenance standards portion of the building code.
So just to be clear, what came about, where this originated from, was I had some folks call me up that were, I guess, complaining about some dilapidated vehicles and driveways that had not moved in, in some cases, years, and I even went to look at one of the examples that was given to me, and there was actually moss growing on the vehicle, and that flat tires, no license plates, and that's what spurred this legislation to basically address the folks that had brought this forward to my office, so, Mr. Rodick, if you wanna speak on it a little bit more?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. They actually had Chris Hall from my office canvass the, the city after the, the last meeting, wanting to get a kind of a feel on, on how many of the vehicles we, we have, or how many properties, and we found that about 25 to 30% of the properties that have the vehicles also were targeted for other issues in the past, such as tall grass, debris in the yard, and things like that. So as the ordinance discusses in the, in the commentary, it kind of lends itself towards the method that either the owner or the operator of the property would maintain it, and I think this is gonna, this is a good start. It's gonna help us to, to make a more complete inspection, and not have to try to, and not have, and have a good means of motivating people to go ahead and bring these things into compliance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance 80, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
No.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Ordinance number 80 carries. Ordinance number 4, 2022.
I'd like to make a motion to present ordinance number 4, 2022, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the purchase and installation of lighting on Field 3 at Longwood Park for the City of Macedonia.
Director Chadwick?
Before he does, while you're walking there, I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance to replace the incidence of field three with the word field C wherever it's noted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a planned capital project for two thousand and twenty-two, which will allow us to put lights on to field C. We are going to work with Graybar on this. We have joined with Omnia Partners on a government cooperative, so the bidding process has already been done for us by government standard. And essentially, we will move forward on the purchase with your approval of getting these lights. We do anticipate quite some time with delivery and installation, and this will allow us roughly a May-June timeframe to get this project going. That is obviously subject to change based on delivery times. And this will be an opportunity for us to double our evening programming, so we're really excited about that. We have maxed out our current field usage and are in need of having this expansion to be able to accommodate everything that we're looking to do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance four, two thousand and twenty-two, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number four carries. Ordinance number five.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number five, two thousand and twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council in order to accept energized community grants.
So essentially, this is getting twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and six dollars to apply towards the lights that Director Chaddick just referenced. That's a very nice thing to help offset that cost because it becomes very expensive. So, NOPEC, the organization, they do a lot to give back. They're a nonprofit. It's a nice thing that we benefit from for being a part of NOPEC. And hopefully, we pass that, and I appreciate that from NOPEC because, again, they're offsetting our costs, and that doesn't hurt the bottom line. Any further discussion?
Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance five, two thousand and twenty-two, and pass and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? Ordinance number five carries. Resolution six.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number six, two thousand and twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for various roadway improvement projects for the two thousand and twenty-two road improvement program.
Mr. Gelati.
Thank you, Mayor. Two thousand and twenty-two road program, I'll, for the record, read the list of roads to be completely repaved this year. That is Capitol Boulevard, Prairie Crossing, Brook Circle, Shoshone Trail, Mimosa Drive, Whispering Woods Drive, and Blue Jay Trail. A couple other notes, as we discussed in the work session. Good news is the city received a grant from AMATS for the paving of Valley View Road from Twinsburg Road to the Hudson City Limits. So that will be happening either in two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-four, paid for by AMATS. And here, a little bit later, we'll do our annual PowerPoint roads presentation for council to show everybody where we're at.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd offer that we pass and post according to law, resolution number six, two thousand and twenty-two, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution six carries. Resolution number seven.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number seven for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids to resurface the city-owned parking area adjacent to current golf facilities.
Mr. Gelati.
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward. We'll be resurfacing the asphalt parking lot for the Windmill Golf Center, as well as some incidental work to replace the concrete walk adjacent to the building so that it's ADA compliant.
Can you quickly explain the relationship as to how Windmill Golf is its own business, but what the city has to do with the Windmill Golf Center?
So there was an agreement put back in place when, I think it was called Two Club, and there was a long, lengthy agreement that I believe Mr. Gaddetti was involved in. But some of the things on there involve that parking lot. And the key on there, when you look at the legislation, is city-owned. We still own that property. They're leasing that from us. We did extend that lease to fifteen years, not that long ago. It's a great partnership. It's something that was there. Had they not assumed that lease, I don't know what we would do with that area and what was there. But it's a nice thing that we've had in place, and it's working out for both parties. And part of that agreement was to maintain that parking lot, again, prior to me. But we are going to maintain that because if we don't maintain it, we could have a legal matter on our hands, and we don't want that. We want to maintain a good relationship with the vendor and continue that thriving. So that's where we stand with that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. What is your pleasure?
Mayor, I offer resolution number seven, two thousand and twenty-two, to be adopted and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution seven carries. Ordinance number eight.
I move to waive the forty-eight hour rule and place ordinance number eight, two thousand and twenty-two, on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move to offer ordinance number eight, two thousand and twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Falls Motor City for the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-two Dodge Ram three-five-hundred truck for the city of Parks and Recreation Department without the necessity of advertisement and formal bidding.
So we needed vehicles for the, I'll just speak to ordinance number eight and nine now and get it all the way, but we needed trucks. We had one truck that was, I guess, lost to an accident. I don't know, I don't recall which fault it was, but it's really irrelevant. But insurance covered a good portion of that. This is something we budgeted for, for Parks and Recreation and Service. Everything going on in the world is very difficult to get equipment, materials, trucks, cars, computer chips. Everything we can do to get this equipment in to help us serve the public is going to be a huge help. So that's why we're adding this today. Mr. Zernak spent a lot of time, he's the interim service director, trying to find trucks. And he really looked hard to find somewhere that can get them in the quickest fashion that we could, and he was able to find these two trucks. So that's why this was brought before us today. Anything I'm missing, sir?
Nope.
Okay. Any further discussion? What is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance eight, two thousand and twenty-two, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number eight carries. Ordinance number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to waive the forty-eight hour rule and add ordinance nine, two thousand and twenty-two, to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I would like to offer ordinance nine, two thousand and twenty-two, for its first, second, and third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Falls Motor City for the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-two Dodge Ram three-five-hundred truck for the city service department without the necessity of advertisement and formal bidding.
Not to be redundant, but there's an explicit need for this. Again, this is the second truck, two different areas, but we need these to keep our operation flowing in a efficient manner. What is your pleasure?
I would move to adopt ordinance nine, two thousand and twenty-two, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance number nine carries. Any other motions or legislative actions?
Hearing none, we'll go into the mayor's report. I'm going to spend a majority of the time on the road program this evening, but I want to start by saying with the snow that we've had of late, there's been a lot of calls that have come in and questions about where we put snow. When we get that amount of snow, it's got to go onto the tree lawns, it's got to go by the trees, it's going to hit mailboxes. We're going to do our best to help you with that. But understand that that amount of snow, with the crews that we have, our guys really, really worked hard to get that cleared. I mean, they spent a lot of hours and time. And if you've ever been in a truck plowing snow, I can tell you, it's an exhausting, stressful thing because there's a lot of things you have to look for, not just pushing snow, especially during the day, other cars on the road. My favorite, as everyone's aware, looking at a phone, not paying attention when there's a big five or ten-ton truck behind you, you have to watch out for that. So there's a lot of hazards on the road, there's trees. I mean, so many things can happen, but our guys worked very diligently to clear the roads for you, and I think we did an excellent job. And, Mr. Zernak, please send that thanks to our guys because you all have worked very hard, including yourself. Mr. Zernak even got in the truck to help them because that's how intensive a storm it was. I believe we're supposed to get some snow this evening, too, so hopefully it's not a lot. We've done a great job of having our salt re-upped, and our salt domes are full, so we're ready to be there if it's needed, and we'll continue doing what we do. So thank you for that. And I'll just say now, don't drive distracted. Put the phones down, please.
Can I also make one recommendation? If you have a fire plug in your yard, could you kind of dig part of it out? The one across the street from me, I mean, with the amount of snow, that's where the snow goes. But by the time the fire department would get there and start digging it out, they've already lost time. So I'd appreciate, you know, neighbors, get together and let's clear out these fire hydrants.
We're stealing the Chief's thunder tonight.
Please ask your plow truck drivers if you have your driveway plowed professionally. Don't put a pile of snow in front of the fire plug. Saw that in my neighborhood, too. Scary.
Well, you made me think of one more thing. When a city's snowplow is going down the road, they are not going to lift their plow at every driveway. I've heard the complaints about the snow getting into the end of the driveway in the aprons. Listen, folks, there is nothing I can do about that. That will never change. I don't know a city that does it anywhere in the world. I understand it's a pain in the rear end to clear that out. That's usually the most difficult, even for me. But the city's snowplows cannot pick up their plow in front of everyone's driveway because it's going to leave a bunch of snow in front of their ice and all that stuff. So understand that we're not doing that to be difficult or make your life difficult. That's just the way it works.
Mr. Gelati.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, tonight we're going to do our annual PowerPoint presentation on our road program and our citywide pavement conditions. I think you've all seen this presentation in the past, so it really follows the same format we do every year. Sorry, I'm not more creative, but it seems to work, so we're going to stick with it with this year's updated information. So, but this is how we keep track of our data. We quantify our progress, and we're able to quantify the conditions of the roads all across the city. As we discussed earlier, every three years, we take our old pavement conditions ratings report, put it aside, do a new citywide analysis, inspection of all the roads, create a new report, which then becomes the basis for the information we have here for you tonight. Next slide, please, Kyle. Thank you. So, the grading system, if you will, for the roads is created by ODOT. I didn't make it up. We didn't dream it up. It's available through ODOT. Folks all over the state of Ohio are using it. It's based upon a visual inspection of each road. So our inspectors visit each road, observe the conditions, and grade each road on eleven different categories based on the severity. And each category is weighted a little bit differently. And then you crunch the numbers, you do the math, and you wind up with a final score or grade for each road. Next slide, please, Kyle. So that final grade for each road is the number zero through a hundred, so it's intuitive. Zero is the worst, nothing, I guess. A hundred would be a perfect road. We also assign a color coding to each road. As you can see on the screen or on your handout, red being very poor, and the dark blue being very good. So red is bad, blue is good. Kyle, please. Thank you. So we'll do a little comparison here. The citywide average score, average PCR back in May of two thousand and fifteen, just prior to the start of the road program, was seventy-three point two. Today, it's eighty-three point seven. So you can see the average score of all roads citywide has improved ten and a half points. I think it's fantastic, and I think most people driving around the city would agree that that's really good news. And this applies only to our local roads. State routes and the interstates are not part of this analysis as they're generally handled by ODOT. Kyle, please. Thank you. So here's the data in the pie graph form. Again, red is bad, blue is good. The graph on the left shows the two thousand and fifteen conditions, and you can see there's some red and a decent amount of orange, not a whole lot of dark blue. Today, the red is gone, and the orange is almost gone. And the biggest part of the pie is dark blue, which is very good. So that's good for all of us here in the city. Kyle, please. This is my personal favorite slide right here, the map of the city with the same color coding. And again, it may be a little hard to see on the screen, but if you have the print out in front of you, the map on the left is two thousand and fifteen. You can see there's a lot of red, a lot of orange, not too much dark blue. It was a bad situation. On the right is the current map, and obviously, the red is gone, the orange is almost gone. There's lots of dark blue representing very good roads, a much improved situation on the right-hand side. Kyle, please. Here's the dollars and cents. You can see the dollars that we've spent each year through this journey, and the total at the bottom. And if you add it all up, we've paved twenty-five point three centerline miles of road throughout the city. So that's a really good thing as well, especially considering that we have sixty-six total miles. So that's where we stand. Kyle, I guess you can flip to the last one. So that's the information we have for you tonight. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, criticisms, accolades, we're all ears. Vinnie?
Joe, I would just like to ask you, probably asked you this once before. I have a resident on Hampton Road. When you look at the road, it fits into the fair color coding.
Okay.
But when you drive the road, there's an accordion effect.
Okay.
He recently has told me again, he says the latest issue is when the school buses go up and down it, I mean, a lot of noise. Garbage trucks, a lot of noise. I would just ask you that if you can have somebody just actually drive it when it's clear and when it's dry, and to see if that would be moved into the next lowest calculated area.
Yeah, we can do that certainly, Vinnie. And just so everyone's aware, there was some spot patching performed on that road last fall to help with exactly that issue, as you call it, the accordion effect.
Well, that's similar to Newport, which is falling apart.
Yeah, Newport's a lot worse.
Yeah, I've run that. When the weather's good, it's got a lot of holes and a lot of, yeah. So I know it's only sixty-four, so hopefully, if we don't do it this year, we can do it next year. And not take one that's below it like we did last year. We took one that was a higher number and did it above that. That's the one thing with this published, the residents know where their roads are at on the list. So I'd appreciate it. North Freeway Drive, if we ever get to the point of doing that, I would gather that would be when maybe we have some more businesses come in to come in there because we've had, you know, it was made to draw businesses in, and it's been stuck in a rut for quite a few years of waiting for more companies to come in.
Having worked in Oakwood Village, that's more of a cut-through than any of our businesses that are affected by it in the city of Macedonia. You can see the difference, you can see where the Oakwood line is compared to where the Macedonia line is. But it's mostly used as a cut-through. I agree with Mrs. Tully with the fact that, you know, it obviously didn't draw the kind of business that we were hoping to, where we would get the tax benefit of being able to do that more on a regular basis. But there's a lot of traffic on it, but it has nothing to do with.
Nobody at work.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gelati. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission had their first meeting of the year last week on January nineteenth. We talked about what's coming up for this coming year. They've already got all of their events and activities planned, which is great. I think they're already into winter with that. They'll be installing their AEDs, which Mr. Chaddick, I believe, talked about in the last meeting. We did talk about, they, I did a little comparison of their savings of utilities. I was very interested to see how the facility, the rec center did when it came to their water bill after they fixed that, the hot tub. And in two thousand and nineteen, the water bill was over forty-two thousand, and in two thousand and twenty-one, it was twenty-five thousand. That's not completely attributed to the hot tub. There were four months where there were no showers in the locker rooms, but I think fixing that hot tub was great, and it's very popular. So I think, want to thank Mr. Chaddick again for getting that done because that was a huge project, and it was kind of the first thing he did when he walked in the door. We said, here's this, see if you can do it. And he got it taken care of. So I think we've, and also, there's a savings on electricity with the installation of the new LED lights throughout the whole building. Two thousand and nineteen, the cost was just under ninety-two thousand dollars. In two thousand and twenty-one, which was a full year of electricity, it was seventy-eight thousand dollars. So things are going well, though. There has been, the gas has been about the same, but we're doing a huge HVAC update in the rec center coming up, so that might be someplace that we'll see some savings. We also had this great Instagrammable graphs that Mr. Chaddick gave to the Parks and Rec Commission that showed us where the revenue was coming from, from membership and programs, and everything looks good. They had a lot of, they have a list of accomplishments that they shared with us for Parks and Rec Commission. And one other thing, there was some discussion, NHAA had, or a member of the NHAA had reached out and proposed that NHAA get a reduction in fees because there are Macedonia members on their teams. And Mr. Byber, one of the commission members, made a motion to vote on whether or not that was something that we would be interested in, and that is, there was unanimous vote that we would not be allowing any fee reduction for the renting of our fields. The rental of our fields pays for the maintenance. The rental of our fields pays for the maintenance of our fields. People of Macedonia were kind enough to provide the fields, these premier-level fields. We are not charging to make money on that. We're charging to recoup our costs that we're putting in for playing on the field. So, that was a motion that was passed as a recommendation to the mayor. And that is about all we did in that meeting. Our next meeting will be the third Wednesday in February at 6:00 on the, at the rec center.
The JED committee meeting last night was canceled due to scheduling conflicts between COVID and other areas of family responsibilities. The next JED meeting will be on Thursday, March 3rd.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Very normal, we'll go into department reports, first starting with interim director, Mr. Zernak.
Hello. To touch base with what the mayor said about the salt, their salt sheds are full. Their salt sheds are full. We just got a delivery of 600 ton of salt. We've been cold patching, we've used up to this point about two tons since the snow started flying. We fixed over 80 mailboxes, dug out about 24 of them so that people could get their mail, moved some snow from some, call this X, in Gardens Highland, did the best we could. So, we're currently working on the normal stuff, tearing up your street and fixing it. So, other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. All right, Director Jalati.
Last time at the podium tonight, I promise. Thank you, council, for passage of resolutions number six and seven tonight. So, in addition to the road program, please remember that this year will also be paving Highland Road. You may recall, last year, the city received a grant from Ohio Public Works Commission for the paving of Highland Road. That is from Valley View East all the way to Chamberlain Road. So, that'll be happening this summer. One item of note there, I'd like to get the word out, let everyone know right now, there will be traffic delays when we pave Highland Road. As you guys are aware, it's a heavily traveled road, lots of traffic all day long. So, when the crew is out there actually performing the work, we're going to have some traffic backup. So, we'll get the word out ourselves, social media, letter drops, signage on the road to alert everyone that it's coming. So, that will be the item there for Highland Road. One other note for council, we also received word recently that we're going to get a second grant from AMATS. This is for the Highland and Valley View Road Intersection Project. As you may recall, that is scheduled for 2025 construction. The grant we just received is for $302,000. So, that will be on top of the grant that we got last year that was $1.8 million. So, another good bit of news there for the city. End of report.
Do we, are we supposed to clap now? Because I think that's amazing. Because I want to clap for that. That's awesome.
Yeah, for it.
Thank you. That's huge. It's a very expensive project.
Yeah, it's really good news. There's no question about it.
Just a quick question on Highland. How long do you anticipate that construction to take?
Yeah, I don't know yet. I mean, I don't think it's a very long schedule, if you will, number of days.
Oh, not weeks?
A couple of weeks, perhaps. So, we'll know more once we get closer to construction, we'll have a more
Because you know that's going to be the first question after everybody starts experiencing the slowdowns, is how long does this take?
How much longer? Yeah, and that'll all be, then information will be pushed out before any work begins, as we typically do.
Do you know if the intent is to have it closed off and detoured, or if they're going to have it still drivable?
No, it's going to still be drivable. We've, we had discussed this a little while, myself, Safety Forces, Safety Director. And the detour is not a great idea. There's no really good way to set up a detour, except to take the traffic to 82, and we don't want to do that because then you cause a problem on 82. You can't really pave it at night because there's residential in the area, so night work is not a great idea. So, we're just going to pave it live, if you will, just like most of the rest of the roads.
And just to be clear, because this had come up, and I had heard some hubbub around town, but we go through the competitive bidding process for all our road programs, which basically means that the engineer prepares the bid specs for all the roads. Any contractor that's interested in the job will put a sealed bid into that gentleman right there. They have a bid opening with all the contractors present. They open up those bids, and the lowest and best gets the job. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that's how that works. There's no, there's no impropriety when it comes to that because it's a very defined process that, you know, it keeps it neat and clean. And I don't think I've ever, I think I attended one maybe, but it's a really
Yeah, that's all you need to attend, yeah.
Yeah, I don't generally attend them, but it's a pretty neat process because then it shows everyone, it's transparent, and it's neat and clean. So, I just want to make sure everyone knew how that worked.
Keeps us legal.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Jalati.
Thank you.
Director Chaddick.
I'll bring my computer because I have so much to go over. Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have too much. Councilmember Brand stole all my thunder today. So, I would like to thank interim director Zernak and his crew for the amazing job they did of snow removal at the rec center and also the clearing of the pathways. We had a handful of guests come into the facility specifically in the mornings to let us know just how amazing everything was cleared out and that it's the best they've seen in a decade. So, really excited for that. Thank you, Mr. Zernak, for getting the crew on board, getting that taken care of. I want to also stress to people, we do not have leaks in the rec center right now. Everything has been examined. There is nothing actually leaking. What's happening is snow melting from the rooftop is getting into some of our HVAC ventilation, and we're getting drips in certain spots in the building coming specifically out of that. We've already had service check it out. We do not have any active leaks. The pavilion rentals are now live for residents, and in another week, nonresidents will be able to rent facilities outside as well. And then ballfield rentals will be live in the next couple of weeks. And speaking to Councilmember Brand's statistics about the electric, we actually, I think our savings was $13,668 over the 2019 total. 2020, obviously, we were closed for three months during that timeframe. Couple of interesting, fun facts. During the December holiday membership sale that we hosted, we made $18,552 on memberships in just that timeframe of the couple of weeks of that sale. So, that was really good news for us. Weird statistic, 61% of our members are nonresidents. So, that's a large amount of our contingency coming into the rec center, actually, nonresidents. So, I just wanted to share those couple pieces of information. And then registration-wise, for aquatics, in 2021, we had over 9,000 registrants for our aquatics program. So, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Veras.
Yeah, thank you. I don't even need to go there.
You just stand on the chair to talk into that.
My finance has been busy gathering data for our audit and working on the implementation of electronic invoice approval, which will also increase efficiencies for the department and everybody that uses the electric.
Mr. Veras, when do you anticipate getting the new forms for 2021 for the refund on the website? People are asking. They're ready to go.
They're ready to go, and we can give them the file. They're up there. Okay.
All right.
Yes, they're ready. I already put them up morning.
Either in this morning? Thank you.
Cut quick. See how Oscar popped out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Tully stole my thunder, but I have to reiterate, you're not shoveling your hydrants out for the fire department, you're shoveling them out for your house or your neighbor's home. We had a major fire yesterday evening on South Shepherd. Luckily, that location, that hydrant was fine, it was operational, and everything went well. Suffered one minor injury, a firefighter treating, released from the hospital. We're doing good, but the hydrants are very important to get them uncovered and talk to yours, as Ms. Brand said, private plow drivers. I've seen people do crazy things with snow. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but we do have an ordinance, you're not allowed to plow across the street. So, you know, those hydrants can be very important. So, that's the end of report.
Thank you. Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. Police Department has slowed down with the cold weather. People tend to stay in when it's really cold. Unfortunately, when we get the heavy snow like we had the other day, they tend to wind up in ditches when they're on their way to work. So, you need to get on the road, be careful, slow down, take your time. And if you don't need to get out, stay home. And to help the service department, don't park on the street. Let the folks go right down with the plows, get it all off the road. When they have to go out and around, it just, it causes more problems. When you move the car, then there's a huge pile of snow there, and it's just, so if you can leave your car off the street, put it in your driveway when they're going to come through with the plow. And not necessarily when there's going to be heavy snow, just any snow, help the service department out.
But we do have the parking ban for two inches or more. You're not allowed to talk on the streets. And actually, after what time, chief, you're not allowed to park on the streets at all anyway?
2:00 a.m.
So, after 2:00 a.m., you're not allowed to park on the streets anyways? And you definitely want to move your car because you don't want the snowplow to move your car because that would be really bad for all parties. It's really hard to see, and as I alluded to earlier, those guys, it's when you're tired and it's a lot of work and it's stressful, please keep your cars in your driveway. Macedonia has driveways that I think are suitable for the most part, that we can keep our cars out of the street for your safety and our employees. Chief, I will also add that before our meeting this evening, I had the pleasure of swearing in two folks for, one was a part-time dispatcher, Ms. Sesniak, and the second one's kind of a big one, it was a sergeant opening we had with Sergeant Heisler now. And I'd like to congratulate them both on their new positions and welcome Ms. Sesniak to the dispatch team.
Can I add one more thing about parking on the street? When it snows, your garbage cans don't go in the street. There was, you probably noticed, it was on Crow.
Yeah.
They put their garbage cans on the street, so you've got the plow, but you've also got people driving on it. Put them at the end of your driveway. If you're not going to shovel your driveway, they still can't be in the middle on the street.
Yeah, you don't want the truck to hit those either. That's not pretty. All right, Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of areas. In addition to wrapping up 2021, we are in the middle of recruitment for our service director, and we have expanded our marketing reach to reach out to, we're using Ohio Means Jobs, we're using LinkedIn, we're using OhioGov.com to get more qualified and diverse candidates. And we are just getting our process started, and we'll be looking at reviewing the candidates and doing our first set of virtual interviews. Don't know how long the process is going to start, but we are going to work it very slow and make sure that we have the right person put into a really important spot. Our benefits, so at the end of the year, I met with Fidelli last week, and they gave us our final numbers, and the city of Macedonia hit 75% of claims versus the premiums. So, they usually see average is 83, and we fell in at 75. What does that mean for us? That means that going forward, we're in a better position. So, I've asked Fidelli, and they are going to do it, and we're going to look at these numbers every month. And that's going to help us to keep track and to gauge where we're going to be and puts us in a better position to know where we want to go as we look at our next year. So, I'm very excited and have to thank the members for being better consumers because we did very well, best we've done in almost five years that I've been here. So, I'm very excited to see what next year's going to hold. Okay, so, for things that we are doing, we are working on the policy and procedure employee handbook. We're trying to revise it to reflect all of our current policies and procedures and any employment law updates. Because as you go, you change something, and an ordinance happens, and it doesn't make its way into the handbook, and you have all these addendums. We're trying to pull it all together. We're working on that this year, working with Mark and the mayor to take a look at that and get that going and into print and before council, obviously. Training, spent a lot of time last year getting the training evaluated and redeveloped and looking at it to make it more specific to departments instead of a one-size-fits-all. It used to be, we'd do training, and you'd have office people sitting through electrical. So, we narrowed it down to this belongs here, and this type of training is for this group. And so, when we go to training in 2022, it'll be more specific to the departments and not just a one-size. Last but not least, our HRIS system, we are currently working on creating a document library for all of our forms. We're making them PDF filings. We'll put them in our AHA system, and that will enable people to go one place to get forms. It'll eliminate duplication, and it'll help us to get closer to our papers. And we have a lot to do in the area of HRIS, and I'll keep you guys updated as we make accomplishments, but this is one of the bigger things, especially when it's like workers' comp paperwork and that. We end up seeing documents that might be five years old. We updated them, but somebody didn't pull them out of their file. So, we're working to get them in the system to where everybody can go to one place. Mayor, end of report.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodick.
A couple items to report. We've put together our planning commission agenda for the February 14th meeting. We've got a couple items. We have two signs, one being the wall sign for Wayback Burger, and the other one being a ground sign for EinTech on the very parkway. And one, a couple items that are significant are the target is proposing a site improvements. And these are kind of unique, but they're kind of COVID-friendly type of improvements. They're going to re-strike the parking lot, and they're going to install signs so they can take merchandise out to consumers. They'll obviously purchase it online, and then they'll have staff bringing it out as opposed to having people go into the store. They're also going to improve the lighting on the site as well. And we're going to have Don Bash Jewelers come back for preliminary plan approval for the project on Fairlane Drive. I have some statistical information from last year. We did, we did issue in the building department just over nearly 1,100 permits, almost 800 of them being residential and the rest being commercial. That created about $350,000 in revenue, which is pretty remarkable. That resulted in just about 1,100 building inspections. And that would have been, on the residential side, we did a lot of hot water heaters, furnaces, air conditioning replacements, seen a significant amount of generator installs, and we're starting to get on the cusp of the solar panels residentially. These have, and I think I talked to some of my counterparts at other places, and it's becoming very commonplace in the residential sector to start installing these panels. And they're usually best installed on the south side of the building, tends to get the most light. But, you know, some communities want to regulate them a little more heavily. I don't, we'll have to decide how we want to go about that, but there are parties that find that to be architecturally unfriendly. But that's going to depend upon how the, you know, the city wants to see it. And then, lastly, I want to talk about the private snowplowers. Because of this past snow, it called to our attention that snowplow contractors are required to be registered with the city. Many of them are landscapers, and they register as a landscaper. We're going to have to better regulate what they're doing when registration time comes because, obviously, for landscaper registers, he might be registered for snow plowing. And the most important thing with the contractors is that they're working in the public right away. And number two, that they are required to supply us with a certificate of insurance. Should there be damage that you could track down, that certificate of insurance covers the damage that they would do. And obviously, if they're working on private property, and most people don't know this, if a contractor if a contractor is working on your property, they're working on your homeowner's insurance. So when this guy is on somebody's property and he's back dragging that plow and he knocks the block out of the foundation wall, you know, that's going to go back on the homeowner. Well, realistically, that homeowner's insurance would go back and they would track this guy down through whatever method and we would have this certificate of insurance on file for that. So if you know anybody that has a private contractor that is plowing, you know, advise them that they do need to be registered. And that's something we're going to get up on the website real soon. I don't expect that we're, in fact, I'm really hoping we won't have any of this snow like we just had. But, you know, when you have this kind of significant type of event, it tends to call those things to attention. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Collins.
Since the last meeting, I've closed 26 help desk tickets. Major programs, our major projects I've been working on, that 1099Gs just got sent to the printers today. So everybody will get those in the mail that got their refund, as well as a, new options for point-to-point data so that we can look at the issues at the rec center and maybe not be reliant upon spectrums, fiber, because it's not working very well, as well as the website. End of report. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Godetti.
I have no report, sir.
Any unfinished business?
I'm either Director Godetti or Director Roddick. Could you talk about the, you know, I had asked about the mysterious pole that showed up at Freeway Drive and Shepherd, and then you had investigated. One of you want to expound on what those poles are used for so that the residents all hear it? So you know, you said there was one by Dave's Auto Body besides that one, and then Mr. Garvis found another one. So they're popping up everywhere.
I think the one at Dave's has been there for some time, but from a layman's perspective, it's basically some communications equipment that First Energy had installed to monitor its equipment and the grid, so to speak. I don't know if you want to provide probably a more technical explanation than that, but it's basically just to monitor what's going on and track its equipment.
And they only put them in the right way and they do not need a permit for the right way? True?
Which the city traditionally does not for
Okay.
Regular, regulated utility.
And then the other question that came up, is there a limit on how many they can put up because they're just popping up and people are saying, did we vote on that? Are we allowing that? And, you know, why do they need this many? Or do we have a limit on how many?
There's no regulation I'm aware of like that.
So they can put up as many as they want?
I wouldn't say yes to that, but so long as it's not substantially interfering with some other right, they can go about business like they've done.
Did they give us any information about where they're going to be putting them? And so when we get these questions, people would know? Or they just pop them up?
I would direct them to call First Energy and they could probably have a more detailed conversation. That would be the primary contact, not the city.
Okay.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business?
Just want to point out once again, this year, thank you to the residents for passing prior levies that are getting our road program done. We've spent $13 million since 2015. Starting in 2017, we spent almost half of that already. In 2017, it was a huge year. And just every year we're able to continue this program is because of the residents and they're voting yes on the road levy. So I just want to remind everyone that this is what you guys did and you said you want it and the city is sticking with it. And we appreciate everyone's patience as we work through the list.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Congratulations to the wrestling team for taking third at the tournament. If you ever had anybody wrestle or you watch it, it's between brain and brawn together. It's an amazing sport and a lot of heart goes into it. There also was a very nice article about the swim team and how they're developing. The swim team is coming back together, so it's nice to see. And then my last question is, did you go to the basketball game?
What are you talking about?
According to the paper, the girls were, the team was playing downtown yesterday. Is that true?
I think that was the boys yesterday.
Was it?
It was the boys team.
Down at, how did they get that at Rocket Mortgage? It was amazing to see that. I think that's an awesome thing.
Yeah.
The varsity girls did it, but it was COVID and all that stuff, so they canceled, I think, the JV girls, but they, they do partner with that, but it's weird because they play at 1:00 and then the game's at 7:00. So it's a weird dynamic, but it's kind of neat. I'd like to play there.
It's okay.
The boys were actually scheduled to play the night we had the big snow.
Yeah.
So they fortunately got it moved.
Okay, any other new business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.